We've got a football game to watch tonight, so let's call this the January 13th meeting, the Ponca City School Board to order. We'll start with the flag salute.
Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correct.
Pray with me. Father, thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. Help us not to take any for granted and to fully appreciate your gifts. Please be with our leaders, local boards, cities, counties, state, national, and world leaders. Help them make decisions based on what's right for all people. It's sometimes very hard to be in these leadership positions, and we thank them for their service. And we thank you, Father, for bringing this school board, these school board members to us. Their volunteer work and dedication to our students and staff is outstanding. Help our men and women of the armed forces as they serve and protect us. Their sacrifices do not go unnoticed. We say this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Jane, would you call the roll?
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Trup.
Present.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Here.
All are here, so we have enough for a quorum. Item two, presentations and recognition. Special presentation by Shelley to the board members in appreciation for their years of service to the children of Ponca City.
Okay, January, every year is National Board of Education Appreciation Month, and without doubt, we have a fabulous board who works tirelessly, spends lots of hours of their time, and receive no pay just because they love the kids and the staff and the community. And it goes without saying that our sites believe that you are fabulous, too. You notice all your goodies over there on that back table, and you've got quite a few goodies here. But in honor of Board Appreciation Month, I would like to recognize each board member and give you, give our audience and our patrons just a little bit of information about our board members. So when I call your name, if you'll please stand. Our president is Mr. Robin Riley. Robin was appointed to this position in 2012, and he represents Board Number One. He currently serves as President of the Board, and this is actually his second time to serve as President. He serves on the Board Finance Committee and often sits in on Board Property Committee as well. Robin is a retired Conoco employee. He is a Ponca City Public Schools graduate, and he has a grandchild that attends Ponca City Public Schools. He spends many hours, and I am not exaggerating, learning, reviewing, discussing, sending me text messages, asking all kinds of questions, and he wants to continually grow and improve this district. And it's obvious the best interests of the district and students are definitely his main focus, so we appreciate all you do, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Don Newsom, our longest-serving board member. He was elected to the position in 1999, and he represents Ward Four. Mr. Newsom recently ran unopposed for his current board seat, so that we're not going to have a board election in February or April, so Mr. Newsom's unopposed, and we're glad to have him on the board again. He has served as Board President for 13 times. He is a past recipient of the Oklahoma State School Boards Association Platinum Excellence Award, which is designed to recognize the time and commitment made by board members in continuing their education beyond the legal requirements. He serves on two committees. He serves on the Finance Committee and the Board Property Committee. Mr. Newsom is the manager at the Ponca City Airport. He is the voice of experience, obviously, on our board and has a great deal of knowledge about the operations and the finance of PCPS. He knows all about our facilities, and he's been very instrumental in many of our bond elections, and he knows about our properties. He works diligently to serve the, to best serve the students and the district, and we appreciate your time and dedication, Mr. Newsom.
Thank you.
So give him a round of applause. Next, we have Dr. David Kincaid. Dr. Kincaid, if you will stand. He was elected in 2006 and represents Ward Four. He has served as the Board President twice before. He is on the Board Property Committee, and most of you know that Dr. Kincaid owns and operates Kincaid's Veterinary Hospital. He is also a graduate of Ponca City Public Schools, and he has several grandchildren who currently attend PCPS. If you don't know, Dr. Kincaid is a very kind and compassionate board member, and he truly loves our district and our students and our patrons. And there is not a time that I call Dr. Kincaid or have a conversation with him. It may be about any topic. He'll bring up either one of our employees or one of our students and talk about how wonderful they are and what a great Wildcat they are. So he, he truly cares about our Wildcats. So give him a big round of applause. We have Ms. Judy Trup as a member. She was elected in 2004, and she represents Ward Number Three. She has served as the Board President twice before, and she was recently elected as Oklahoma State School Boards Association Region Three Director. So when all of our region school boards come together, she is one of the directors. She serves Garfield, Grant, Kay, Noble, Pawnee, and Payne Counties. And Judy serves on the Board Curriculum Committee, which is a perfect committee for her because Ms. Trup is a retired PCPS schoolteacher. So she understands teaching and learning, and she really is an invaluable board member because she understands the process and understands curriculum and has lived the life of the teachers and knows our students. So we appreciate all your service, Ms. Trup. And finally, our newest member of the board. It's not so new anymore. This is 2020, is Ms. Nancy Zimmerstein. She was elected in 2017, and she represents Ward Two. She serves on the Board Curriculum Committee with Judy. She works for Jupiter Sulphur here in Ponca City out at Phillip 66. She is also a graduate of PCPS and has the very unique perspective of having her own children attend our school. She has two current children attending Ponca City Public Schools, and she wants our students to experience the best opportunities PCPS has to offer. So give it up for Ms. Zimmerstein. And I don't think I mentioned that Ms. Trup is a PCPS graduate as well, so we...
I have two grandchildren going to school.
Yes, she has grandchildren, so hey, once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat. They're still members. So we appreciate all their service, and they question, they bring ideas, they have suggestions, they go to our events, they spend a lot of time, and they earn zero compensation. But we are going to double their salary tonight, so... And, and you know, what you see, what the public sees, happens to be a two- to three-hour board meeting. They spend countless hours behind the scenes. We have committee meetings, we have facility meetings. It's every day. So they spend a lot of time supporting our district. They have been proponents of our staff. They have been in favor of teacher raises, stipends, and they all understand that the state of education needs to make education the number-one priority in Oklahoma. So one more round of applause for all of our board members. We truly appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Shelley. Next on the list, Presentation of Employee of the Month and Friends of Education Award. The first will be the Certified Employee of the Month, Denton Long. Denton is the principal over at East Middle School across the street.
I usually read them, so... He had a little different position over here. There are not enough words to describe and justify the character. Mr. Long has demonstrated over the past three years serving East Middle School. Each year, there have been some very difficult, distinct challenges, with each challenge becomes another challenge, right? Mr. Long addressed them with integrity, patience, and flexibility. He has also demonstrated the quality of an outstanding growth mindset. Mr. Long listens to the staff and considers their options when making decisions. He is supportive both inside and outside the classroom. Mr. Long embraces challenges with grace and compassion. He is very deserving of being named the Certified Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Mr. Smith, I'll have to say, when Mr. Layton went over to present that award, he came back and said that, that Mr. Long's teachers gave him a group hug when they presented. That was so, I thought that was so awesome in front of the students. I thought that was awesome.
Next will be the Support Employee of the Month, Doug Spicer, mechanic and dress driver, bus driver for PCPS. For those that may not know, Randy Emting will make this presentation.
Doug Spicer's been with the Ponca City School District over eight years. Doug's responsibility includes everything mechanical and keeping our vehicles running for the district. Besides working on vehicles, he drives routes, fuels vehicles, works on building projects, and helps set up for many. He's a jack-of-all-trades. Doug is here early in the morning, stays late to make sure all the routes are covered and all the students get home safely. Doug also comes in early on weekends and fuels buses. When Doug received a work order on vehicle, their response is quick to get the job done. Doug is also proactive. When he sees something that needs to be fixed, he gets right on it. Doug also takes pride in the buses and making sure they're clean and ready for the next trip. Thank you, Doug, for all you do for transportation.
Thank you, Doug. Our last presentation will be to the Friends of Education, to the Pie Partner at Trout School, Quality Water. And I think I mentioned this last week, but I'll mention it again. We would be in really big trouble if it wasn't for our Pie Partners. So we really do appreciate what the Pie Partners do for us. So Carla's going to present to Quality Water.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed out on this on Friday. We tried to keep it secret from you. Is hiring you?
She's not.
Okay. Here we go. It's an honor to present Quality Water with the Ponca City Friends of Education Award for the month of January. The purpose of this award is to celebrate people outside our school system that volunteer their time and finances to make our schools stronger. Research shows the importance of hydrating our entire body, especially the brain. Every month, a team at Quality Water delivers a water bottle for each student plus a few extra for staff. During the hot months of August, September, October, and May, and maybe I should put in December there, this helps keep us cool. During the cold and flu season, the bottles reduce the spread of germs from the water fountain. In addition to the water, Quality Water supports our students with reading tutors. They bolster teacher spirits with meals during parent-teacher conferences. They've also donated funds to celebrate our students. Kelly Johnson and his staff are very special people. Quality Water has been a strong member of the Partners in Education program for many years. Weren't you one of the original Pie Partners?
I think so.
I think, if I'm remembering that right, a few years back. There we go. We count ourselves lucky to call them a partner and a friend. Thank you for supporting Team PCPS. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Get back to you, Sart.
If the three recipients will go out in the hall, you'll get your picture taken. Denton, don't hang around too long. You've got to come back and give us a presentation.
Okay?
I don't believe we had any comments from the public, did we, Betty?
No.
Okay. Next on the report will be the Building Assessment Reviews with Denton getting his picture taken. Stacy Satery will tell us about...
We forgot the East Middle School.
Student presentations.
Which one?
East Middle School.
Oh, I'm sorry. East Middle School Student Council. Suzie Schatz's group's going to talk to us.
Okay, my name is Suzie Schatz, and I am the eighth-grade Student Council Members Advisor, and I'm not going to talk because I'm going to let them talk about what they do. And we did win, for the second time in a row, our state Honor Council, and they're going to let us, let you all know how we got it. This is Ryan Nemec. Kimmy Hamlin and Mercedes Sixkiller. They're only three of my 25 kids.
My name's Ryan, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we think we've kind of did to win a little bit. So we decorate doors for all the teachers throughout our building to make them enjoy, have a little bit of fun, too. Spread spirit, make everyone happy, just like the first week, we decorated a door to spread the Wildcat way, to spread all the spirit throughout the school and just have a little fun, too. Good enough.
Hi, I'm Mercedes. One of the first things we did going into the year is we made blankets for the pre-case center, so at naptime, they would have a chance to have a warm comfy blanket. We also, for homecoming, we presented different dress-up days to inspire kids to continue and have fun throughout the week. One of our dances that we had was the Fall Dance. It was really fun for all of us students to get together, get to know other students, and have fun, listen to music, dance around, and see some of our teachers dance. We have Secret Pals, and it's pretty much where we have our teacher, and the teacher has no idea who we are. We get them a gift, once, sometimes twice a month, depending on the student, and they're very thankful. If you make art designs or something like that, they'll hang them up. They try to figure out who it is. They have not succeeded yet, to my knowledge. We had a food drive that went pretty well. We gave, or we were going to give team points for that to help throughout the year to figure out which team wins, which I hope all starts, because I'm an All-Star. We're going to win. We're the better team. And then upcoming events, we have the Humane Society, which is where we're going to be having dog food and cat food brought in to donate to them, so they have a chance to not waste too much money when they don't have enough in the budget. We have a kindness campaign is where no one eats alone at lunch. We don't want anybody feeling left out. We want to incorporate everybody into the school system and make sure everyone that's new or has no friends around in their lunch hour has a chance to make new friends and become better incorporated into the school. We're going to be taking Valentine's cards and flowers up to the nursing homes to bring some spirit to them because they don't always get to have Valentine's, because some people lose time with the elderly, and we would love to see their smiles. We do announcements every single morning. We do all the daily announcements such as sports, going to different church activities to get some tutoring. We do the Pledge Allegiance and Moment of Silence. We also, during PTA meetings, we provide childcare. That way, the parents do not have to worry about what their children are doing, if they're messing with the pens or pencils drawing on stuff. We give them crayons to color pages, and they just have a whole bunch of blast and fun.
Are you going to talk about the teacher appreciation at the end?
Oh, yeah, and at the end of the year, we're going to have teacher appreciation on the, towards the end of the school. We're going to give them different gifts. We're going to come up with a whole bunch of presents, and we're going to have some food brought in for them to have a nice lunch. Thank you.
Now, we had no comments from the public, so we'll move right on to Stacy's report on West Middle School.
Stacy, I'll let you know when you get to seven or eight minutes.
Thank you, because it's kind of long. I'll go fast.
Thank you.
Do we have security?
Oh, we do now?
Yes.
Good job.
She's just happy. I'm just, hey.
Are we waiting?
Well, do I need to wait for... Is it coming on now? Okay. And Betty?
Actually, board members can see it on the monitors.
Okay, so I can go ahead and start. So Betty, I just double-click the left or click the left to move down the slide. Is that what I need to do? Go to slideshow first? All right. So this is our West Middle School 2019-2020 data presentation to the board. I want you guys to look at West Middle School's ELA average for state versus the state average on their OSTP scores. Our sixth graders, we had 5% of those scored advanced, 24% proficient, 42% basic, 29% below basic, and the total proficient for our sixth graders was 29%. If you can compare that to the state average, 8% advanced in sixth grade, 27% proficient, 40% basic, and 24% below basic. So the state had a total of 35% proficient. Seventh grade, we had 7% advanced, 34% proficient, 41% basic, 18% below basic, and with a 41% total proficient in seventh grade ELA versus the state at 8% advanced, 28% proficient, 42% basic, 21% below basic, and 36% total proficient. So now we'll go on to math. Sixth grade math, at West Middle School, we had 10% advanced, 17% proficient, 48% basic, 26% below basic, with a total proficient of 27%. Versus the state, they had 12%. Their average was 12% advanced, 20% proficient, 46% basic, 23% below basic, with a total proficient of 32%. And the seventh grade, 9% advanced, 24% proficient, 49% basic, 18% below basic, with a total proficient of 33%. And the state's seventh grade average was 8% advanced, 23% proficient, 43% basic, 27% below basic, with a total proficient of 30%. So as you can see in math and ELA, both seventh grade, I'll go back up to the ELA, we are above the state average in seventh grade. We do have some work to do in sixth grade, and we are working on that. We've got some interventions and things in place for that. I want to talk to you a little bit about how the fifth graders transitioned from elementary to West Middle School. Transition years from fifth grade to sixth grade is pretty hard for these students. We try to make the transition easier for them. We have a fifth grade visitation, which takes place at the end of the second semester. Fifth graders will come to West and take a tour of the building, kind of get an idea what it's going to be like for them next year when they're sixth graders. We also have transition nights for parents and students, so that the parents and the students can come together and have a more formal introduction of how it's going to be for them to transition. We do have a communication is a high expectation for us with our parents and students during this transition time. Pre-enrollment data is used to determine the best placement for these students. And we also have Sixth Grade Academy Night, which is where the sixth grade teachers, yeah, sixth grade teachers, the students, and the parents come together, and we talk about what the kids can expect on the first day of school. First day of school, they will stay in the auditorium for, they'll flip-flop it for, in the morning to the afternoon. They won't go to their first through fourth-hour classes. They're going to talk about what they're going to be able to expect. They'll take a tour of the building. It's to get these kids to transition easier into West Middle School. It's really hard when you've got seven district elementary schools, and then you've got McCord and, and other private schools where these kids are coming in. So they need to feel like they're not just being thrown out to the wolves, so to speak. So we try to do a lot of things to help them transition over. Let me get to my next one. Okay. Here we go. Sorry. I was thinking about some of the things that we're going to focus on at West for increasing our student achievement in ELA, and this is for sixth grade and seventh grade both. We do a lot of tracking their reading star data monthly. We do that at site-level PLCs and district PLCs. We have a targeted ELA after-school tutoring for students in need, and this is for ELA. We have our new attendance policy in place, and that is monitor daily. Research shows that if the kids are there, they're going to learn. If they're absent, they're not going to be able to learn. We have a new ELL software program that our ELL students use. It's called Imagine Learning. That usages monitor daily. There's a certain amount of minutes per week that these students have to be on that software program. We are providing more curriculum-specific Kagan training. I'm sending some teachers to Dallas and also for training, for Kagan training in Dallas, and also some Kagan training in February, which is more specific to the curriculum that they teach. These teachers have had the five-days basic cooperative learning, which means they're Kagan-trained teachers, so this is going to give them more specific strategies to use in ELA, math, social studies, and science. We also have a Reading Plus training that we're going to start for our reading teachers coming up in January. Can't remember the exact date, Barbara, but 29th, okay. We do have Study Island that we use at West Middle School, so we're going to continue to be using our Study Island and our nonfiction writing prompts are something that we are expecting building-wide. Okay. And increasing student achievement in math, and some of these will be pretty similar as the ELA. We're going to be tracking the math data monthly at our site-level PLCs and also district-level PLCs. We are offering math tutoring after school for those students that have that need. The attendance policy, again, is there. They have to be at school to learn. We are providing close reading, and I think I skipped that on the ELA, so I apologize, for, maybe it wasn't on there. It's supposed to be on there.
For all subjects.
Gosh, yeah, it is. The close reading strategy is on there, because they can use that in ELA and math and across the curriculum. Again, I'm going to be sending my math teachers and my other specific curriculum teachers to the Kagan trainings. We are increasing our use of Accelerated Math, which is a program that the students can learn at their own pace. They take their tests, and depending on where they are in their standards, it moves them up or backwards, so it's very specific on their need. Also, the math is working on nonfiction writing prompts. We also have Math Plus for students who didn't score proficient on STAR, and that's just math. Lab class these students attend for some extra math help. There is a TA that's going to be provided in that classroom, and she's, she's there. So that gives the students some more specific support, too, smaller groups, to teachers, well, teacher and teacher's assistant. A focus for West Middle School for this 1920 school year, increase the rigor. I would like to see that rigor increase in our daily classroom instructions. I'm hoping to see this with our close reading, Kagan structures, CFAs. We need to up the rigor in our CFAs, and we're going to look at the level of rigor of the standard in order to achieve that. We do look at our state scores and our star scores specifically to place these students where they need to be for their specific needs. Interventions using CFAs, we have something that's called All Hands on Deck, and that is basically where the students will come that don't need remediation. There are students at the end of the day. The teachers at the end of the day will send their students during seventh period to the library, and if the students, if the teacher sees that students do need remediation, they pull those kids in and keep them in their classrooms. And also, teachers that have PLCs that day are built into the master's schedule. Math Plus and Reading Fluency Lab is something that we're also going to continue to focus on at West. We do have preview data that we look at for placement at the beginning of the year for these students. Guided study is something that's built into our master's schedule, and it is, if students are behind on homework, they need to get caught up, the teacher will send work down, and the students will be caught down in guided study. Wildcat Way, and everybody's talked about that, we've heard about it, and West Middle School knows exactly what that acronym means. We're focused on it every day. Teacher retention, I want to provide support for the teachers, new and veteran, utilizing my instructional coach and providing professional development in areas of need. So, do you have any questions? It's kind of fast, but...
Is the transition the main reason sixth grades below seventh grade?
I think it is, Robin. I really do. I feel like it takes, and I've, since this is my first year at West, coming from an elementary background, I know that it's taken, it's taken the students, at least this half, this half of the semester, over this half of the year, first semester, for them to actually mature enough to handle the transition of going from class to class. It's, it's, it's hard for them to adjust. Yeah. They're doing a great job, though, I must say. Come back from Christmas, I've seen a big maturity growth. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Stacy. Good job.
Next will be Denton, telling us about Across the Street.
Get an award and then present.
All right. Well, thank you for having me tonight. I like this night. At first, the first year, I was kind of scared of it, and now I'm getting a little more used to it. I was just wondering if OU had won a couple weeks ago, would we, would everybody still be here? Are we going to be rescheduling this night? But we didn't have to worry about it.
No, we did not.
This data is, the test data I want to present is from last year. Last year had its challenges with behavior. It's reflected in the test data as it was... It's reflected in the test data as it was compared to the previous years and compared to the state. So I'm first to start out with, with science. Their science grade was below average, which is, which is not normal for East Middle School. They are eight percent below the state average. A lot of, I think that's linked to the reading because if, when we look at the thirty-two percent proficient or above in science, it's very similar to the thirty-one percent in the ELA in reading. On the next slide here, we're working with the teachers. With East Middle School, it's kind of, you know, it's funny, it's a funny little school because every year it's a completely new group of teachers. So the teachers, that's what I focus, I'm sorry, students, I said teachers, but it's actually not, not a completely new group of teachers because it's, there's a lot of them that stay around. But it's a new group of students, and so I focus a lot of the training on the teachers and what they can do and what they did last year and what we can improve on. One of the things they did before the school year was, one of the science teachers went to a Google certification along with a math teacher and an English teacher. They got certified in Google Documents and are Tier Two Google Certified Teachers, which I don't know exactly what that means, but I know they help us out a lot by getting information spread throughout the school. The science teachers this year are putting more, more focus on reading and graphs during the test. It's a big part of the science test, so that's one of the focuses they're going to place. And then over next year, and it will be partial implementation, and then the year after that will be full implementation, they're going to have a new group of Oklahoma standards. So Ms. Weiss is working to head, to state, she's the department chair, she's staying ahead of those changes. All right, the next scores we have are the ELA scores. This one is also lower than normal. Normally, ELA is anywhere from five to ten percent above the state average with EMS. Last year, they were right on the state average. The, again, it's closely linked to reading. There was a big portion of our students that were gone last year due to just average absences or suspension or also an ISD. We had just, we had a large number. We had almost, we averaged one suspension a day last year and over 500 assignments of ISD. It was, it was a difficult year in that, in that aspect, and I'm not trying to make excuses, but it does, it is going to affect the test scores. On the, the focus here, reading is obviously a focus every year, but it's in the district throughout, we've, we've made it even more of a focus. We use iXL programs. iXL is a computer program that these students get extra practice with, with their Chromebooks that they're all assigned. They get assigned specific skills every week, and then they work on those until they are proficient, and they receive a ninety or a hundred on that. We are star testing monthly now to make sure that we're seeing, seeing the growth, they can get a little more data to find out where they need to go, what they need to focus on, maybe go reteach some stuff. And we, in these middle school PLC meetings, the administrators' meetings, we go over that data and try to figure out structures and strategies to increase that. Reading Plus is now going to be implemented, that is just now starting this semester. It's going to be sixth through high school, sixth grade through high school. We use a different program, we use MobiMax and some other ones, but now we are going to be Reading Plus to keep everything streamlined and hopefully get the students, they'll be used to the program, they'll get more out of it. And then Kagan. Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures was something that I wasn't sure about until this past summer, and then I am full in, a Kaganite, if that's a word. I bought into it. When I first saw some of the, the pictures they use for their stuff, the characters on the books didn't have any noses, and it kind of like, this doesn't going to apply to eighth grade, but it really does. It's a great, it's, all the structures they use are great, and I've really bought into Kagan, and I'm hoping, I know a lot of the teachers have too, and I'm trying to get everybody going to it with the cooperative learning. And then this next one, this is math. The math was above state average. We made some changes in math, kind of rearranged how our advanced classes worked. They are four percent above the state average. The eighth grade math test is a hard test. They struggle throughout the state with it, but I'm proud that our teachers work so hard. We have a good PLC group, and it's getting better with math. We have a good PLC group in all, in all our core subjects, but math is, is getting better every day, and they put a lot of effort into working together and coming up with more common assessments and, and working hard. All right. Again, they're going to be using the STAR test monthly. We have a math plus class, much like West does, which we have a teacher and a TA, and there's a maximum of fifteen students in there at a time, so they are getting a lot of individual help in that class. And along with ELA, the, they are going to be, teachers going to Dallas along with West Middle School, getting Kagan-specific strategies for math and for ELA. All right, and they're doing that next weekend, so they're excited about that. School-wide strategies. So one of the, again, the emphasis is on reading this year. During our halftime, we implement a mandatory fifteen minutes of reading. So the first fifteen minutes of halftime, they are reading, and that's, that's all they're supposed to be doing, with the exception of gifted and talented and student council and one of our internet classes, which doesn't, it doesn't have a whole lot of people, but we have an internet-specific halftime to allow students who don't have internet access at home a little extra time to get homework done. During tutorial, we have a room where they get to go with one of our teacher assistants and work on homework, get anything caught up. It says average is two-hundred-and-twenty-five. That's out of the roughly three-hundred-and-fifty students over, every year, we have about two-hundred-and-twenty-five go to tutorial at least once a year. And then the reteach, they get to go to ELA or math reteach, and again, that's around three-hundred-and-thirty for both those, every year, out of the students to go get, at least do that one time. School culture, this year is, is improving. The, one of the things we focused on was the Wildcat Way during the first seven weeks, if I count the Wildcat, right. We had different guest speakers, Ms. Air was one of them, come in and speak to our students every Wednesday morning. Representative Burns came by, representative from Pioneer Tech came by, and they all talked about different aspects of the Wildcat Way. And the students liked it, and they got to, they got to hear a lot of good things from it. We have been presenting professional development to our teachers about giving and getting respect with the, with the students. One of the things that's changed from the past is that I don't believe that all students are taught, "Respect your elders" as much as they used to be. And so the teachers are working on giving respect to build that relationship so they can get respect in return that maybe those students hadn't learned at home. We're continually trying to remove barriers from students participating extracurricular activities like band and sports. We rearrange schedules, we try to, we work with coaches. I texted Coach Harmon just the other day trying to get a student in offseason, and he's going to let him in there, he's going to work, it's a student with some struggles, and he's going to let him, give him a chance to get in there. We try to give, preach positive feedback and communication to, I do it to the teachers and to the students, I try to get the teachers to do it to the students, just to get everybody, you know, get a good mood. People are more likely to work for you when you, when they like you and they're, and they're in a good mood. And then the academic pillar is about getting student success and getting them ready for the 21st century and trying to get all the students as much as possible into extracurricular activities. Again, we've, Kagan's been a training, has been a focus, not just with our ELA in math, but for everybody, and we had the teachers attend and help us out getting everything Google-certified. It shortens communication time between teachers, parents and students. I'm looking at going from the weekly meetings to bi-weekly meetings for the next, next school year, just to help with my, our team meeting time, where we kind of, that's kind of been put on the wayside, and so we're trying to help that out and get it back. We're going to keep, continually work on the student handbook to get it more relevant to today's students, and then my big want there is, if possible, I would like to get our teacher, there's a lot of students that would, that would, that would help, and I ask Ms. Air for that every year, we talk about it, and she is working for, I promise that, but...
You had one, remember?
Yes.
We're working on it.
Yeah, we're working on it, yeah. All right, and then for next year, I've got Angela Duckworth, who's a PhD in psychology, and this is part of that growth mindset, as much as talent counts, effort counts twice. That's what we want the students to know, that just because they're talented doesn't mean they shouldn't, they shouldn't try and put effort in, and just because they aren't naturally talented doesn't mean they shouldn't put effort in because they can grow, that's part of that growth mindset. I kind of argued with my wife a little bit, she said something about Cooper is, is talented, my son Cooper is talented, it's something, but don't tell him that, tell him he's got to work on it. And so that's part of that growth mindset, and so, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
How much of that math do you think the students don't know the basic facts?
You took multiplication facts and stuff like that?
Yeah.
I would say that a lot of them don't know it, just, you know, memorize it, they use, use the calculators. I saw this kind of, I saw a meme one time, it was, it was a person making fun of someone from the, a teacher from the nineties saying, "You won't have a calculator everywhere you go," but they were wrong, so, but you do have a calculator wherever you go, but, so I think that is a little bit less of a focus. The, so, they use a calculator on the test, they use a calculator on, on their schoolwork. I don't know in elementary how much they do without calculator, but at ours, it's, we use the calculator as much as possible because it does reflect the most on the test that way.
Okay. I was one of those that didn't have that calculator.
No, yeah.
I had to learn it right up here.
Yeah, I, luckily I can still do that, but...
Any other questions?
I was quite one of those that said, "You're not always going to have a calculator."
Yeah.
I taught junior high for, I know what junior high's like. It's tough to teach them anything, but I'm, you know, I remember telling my kids that. Of course, they didn't know what calculator is.
Yeah, well, I mean, not many people would have predicted we'd have a computer in our pocket all the time, so, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So the eighth grade test is harder because...
So all tests, all standardized tests, they're allowed to use calculators?
Yes, the ones we, yes.
Are they allowed to use them on the ACT and the SAT? I thought I heard that they weren't going to let them use them anymore, but I don't, that might have been not true.
Shelley says they can use them.
Okay.
What was your question?
It was just, you said the eighth grade test is a lot harder, is it?
There is a, I, there's, just looking at the data, there's got to be a big jump from the seventh grade math test to the eighth grade math test because there's such a drop statewide.
Across the state, the cut score.
Yeah, and so, our, looking at our STAR data, the Algebra I students, they're advanced students, most of them right now would be proficient in, in the eighth grade math test, but the pre-algebra students, they're the ones that it's, it's a lot harder to see the proficiency in. And so there's, Barbara's worked on that for two or three years now, I guess, to, to try to find, figure out what the difference is and what are we missing in the test that's not given.
I think Barbara can explain that to us. Their hope is, I mean, we talked about it has to be either standards or the test doesn't match the standards that we're covering. They assure me that they've done all that research and that those two do match up. Their hope is that eventually the gap in the test, but they can't tell us why there's such a huge dip in eighth grade math.
Well, if they can use calculators, wouldn't they be able to do better?
Yeah, I would, I would hate to see them if they couldn't use calculators, but it's the, the formulas and the, and the processes they got to go through, I think that they're, we're missing out on it.
Is that where, they just don't know the concept?
I don't think that the test is actually testing our standards. So whether our state's integral or the test is wrong.
That's my kid. But the state sets a standard and the test.
Okay.
You fear that would be nothing hard to figure out.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
This will be getting closer to kickoff.
Second year for this test, right? Second year?
Pardon me?
They changed it last year. This is, so it should be the same.
This will be, this, this class will be the third, yeah.
Third?
Yeah.
So that, his results this time was the second year.
The second, yes.
And, and we track his star results, well, everyone's star results every month. We have principal PLCs and they're really on target. There's been a lot of growth in, in math.
Yes.
And a big thing you didn't mention was attendance. Last year...
Yeah, attendance was bad last year. It was, if I recall, it was around eighty-two percent of the students met attendance. This year, we're in the low nineties right now, and so that is, that is increasing with the new attendance policy, and then we're, we're making some efforts too. We give out a monthly award, just kind of randomly pick a student, and if they've met attendance that month, then they get a gift certificate that was supplied by Blackwell Dentistry, one of our pipe partners.
Well, a third of your students last year were deemed chronically absent, missing more than seventeen days of school, and at this point in the school year, you only had a handful.
So what's high school look like for the ninth grade? Are they gone?
Our attendance is a lot better district-wide. Last year, we had over three-hundred students at the high school who missed more than seventeen days of school. Right now, high school, nine through twelve, and I, I'd have to break it down by grade level, we have twenty-five students that are chronically absent.
All over, for all of them.
I was curious to see what, if he's got, had that much trouble in the eighth grade, what are they doing in the high school?
Well, it's better. The attendance is better simply because of our attendance policy, and we're doing some things with suspensions, the boot camp, that kind of thing, some in-house suspensions, so...
Yeah, the, last year and the previous years, for example, just a vape, e-cigarette, on that, that was, that was a suspension the first time we caught them using it or something like that. This year, we've just, we've knocked that down, that would, the first time is, is ISD, and we're trying to, and Mr. Crocker has like a reflection paper that they go over about it, and he's done some, actually some school-wide distribution, information about vaping. And so, we're trying to work on that too, and then the halos are coming in, I don't know...
Today?
They came today, all right, they...
What are halos?
They, I'm sorry, those are vape, they detect the vapes in the bathroom, we're going to put them in the bathrooms and they detect whether they're, they can also detect whether there's a fight or something or not by the noises made.
Oh, wow.
So that's what they do, they go to the bathroom, sneak in there and...
Yes, yeah.
And we're piloting at East, not all over the district with the halos.
We bought them last month.
And no cell phones have made a big impact.
No cell phones, yes, that's...
District-wide.
Bird dog caught.
The, the cell phones, there, no cell phones in the school between school hours, but we have not, when, if they do use a cellphone, we're just simply collecting it and giving it back to either the student or the parent at the end of the day and not having them miss class time for ISD or anything like that.
Smart.
Okay, thank you, Denton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from last month's meeting and contracts under ten thousand. We had just a few this time. We had a study guide for the ACT prep for three-hundred-and-fifty students. We too are going to tune three pianas, including the big nice one in the concert hall, four times a year. We have a yearly contract renewal with BSN Sports, and we do get a royalty payment back from them. One thing, and I really appreciate this one, since I have a granddaughter that's involved, not excited about it because it's on a day off, but Chad Cargill is going to hold his workshop on how to do better on ACT test. Just happens it's going to be on a professional development day.
Week from today.
So kids are going to not get to sleep in late that day, but so be it. Po High steppers have enough money in their activity fund to get a second night of rooms, and they share four steppers to a room. We had to pay for a timing clock at the cross-country meet. UPS contract renewal for the backup for the servers, what, sans, lands, et cetera, and we also had to give our thirty days notice to rescind a contract for the physical therapist. So with that said, unless someone wants to vote on any of those things separately, we'll need a motion to approve five, one dot three, one through three.
Motion approved.
Have a motion from Dawn and a second from?
David.
David. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
No.
No, okay, we'll, we'll vote individually. Okay. I'm getting, I'm trying to get us to that football game, David.
This is true?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye, okay. Number six, action items, and a motion will be required to consider and take action on the following district financial forms. We talked about all these in the finance committee. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve A through, turn the page, make sure I don't miss one.
And... I'll make a motion to approve A through N on the, whatever.
Act for the...
The finance report.
Finance report.
Second.
And a second, motion from Judy and a second from Dawn. Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Cade?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two, consider and take action on the following contracts agreements. These will be the ones over $10,000. I'll list them all, and then we'll go for a single motion to cover them. With Power School Premier subscription for student information system software maintenance and support fees, this is for the ongoing Power School subscription maintenance support fees. B, agreement for the renewal of the Microsoft licensing. This covers all the laptops, desktops, and servers used in the district. C, Stacy mentioned this one, agreement with Kagan Professional Development for cooperative learning training. This will bring 60 participants here in Pocahontas City, 200, a little bit over $200 each, and the training will be in Pocahontas, they will bring a person in for that training. D is an agreement with Rick Scott Construction for the Hal Elevator Contract that we will approve or vote on in a minute for the dollar amounts. This was in the contract last year for the covered walkway addition to the Hal Building and the Hal Elevator, but we dropped the Hal Elevator from that contract, so we have to go back in and have another agreement with Rick Scott Construction to build the elevator. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve A, B, C, and D under three contracts I just mentioned.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Dawn and a second from?
And?
David. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, to talk about, take action to accept the bids for the Hal Elevator project, we're finally going to get it put back together. The bids came in quite a bit less than previously, and the final bid was 265,000, $288. If anybody has any questions on that, from Brett, that 50,000, 100,000 less, isn't it?
Yes, that's, this is the collective subcontract bids.
Right.
Motion approved.
You have a motion from Dawn to approve it, and a second from?
David.
David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Ken Cade?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey?
Aye.
Dr. Ken Cade?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any new business?
No new business.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I don't have any adjournments.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, too late, we're adjourned.